The Monday, August 25th, 2025 regular meeting of the Paris City Council is hereby called to order at 5:30 PM. For the purpose of this meeting, there is a quorum of the council present. Agenda item number two, invocation. Mr. Gene Anderson will deliver the invocation and the United States pledge of the pledge, and Texas pledge will be led by the city council. Please rise.
Father pray. Heavenly Father, we pray for our city council tonight as they conduct the city's business. Father, they are your agents for good and for law and order and keep things, Father, in a, in a position and condition, Father, where we can all prosper. We pray that you give them understanding in all that they do tonight. We pray for our city, that it would grow and prosper also in our country, our state. We just ask that we would do all things in a way that's pleasing in your sight. And we do pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
We will move on to the citizens forum. Persons desiring to address the council must limit their presentation no more than two minutes. Unless an item is posted on the agenda, the Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits the council from responding to any comments other than to refer to the matter to a future agenda item, to an existing policy, or to, to a staff person with specific factual information. Claims against the city council, the city, council members, or employees, as well as individual personal appeals, are not appropriate for the citizens forum. If necessary, the city council may convene in the executive session under chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code regarding any item on this agenda. The public forum is now open. If there's anyone who wishes to address the council, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Jana, Carla, and Janet. We're with Baby Guns, as y'all know. We've been helping the shelter here recently, take pictures, put them on social media, trying to help the shelter, which we know Lamar County Humane Association is also there. But this lady right here is, is very good with rescues, knows a lot of people with rescues, and we think that we can help more if we had a desk out there. So we were requesting to see if we could have a desk out at the shelter so we can help, you know.
Network the dogs.
Network the dogs. And I don't know if they want to say anything. That's just, I love animals. That's my passion, along with the elderly people. But I think this whole Lamar County and the city is overwhelmed with animals right now, with, with dogs. People's dumping them. They don't have the money. They don't have the money to spay and neuter. And it is, it's really overwhelming for all of us. We have a ton of dogs. She has a ton of dogs. I have 11, and that's a lot with a full-time job. But I do want to be able to go to the shelter and take videos, put them on social media, and let's share them to try to get these dogs help and spay and neuter.
We also have started a, I don't know if you're aware, but a feral cat program. And these ladies are going out and trapping the cats. We also have, is it on the 6th, I think, of September?
Yes.
That we actually have a veterinarian coming in from out of town to assist us with that program. But we need space whenever we're out there because we have our purses, we have personal items, we have things that we need to document. We have, we need to have a space.
She's coming.
Just allotted.
Yeah. And, and that lady is coming September the 6th, and she's planning on doing 100. If we can trap and bring in 100 cats that day, she's planning on doing 100 from 9 o'clock to 5 o'clock in the afternoon up here. So.
And how many have we turned in so far?
I'm not sure. Sherry's got that answer, but it's probably.
It was, it was close to 2,000, I think.
Yeah.
So that's how many cats that have gone through that have been paid for.
Thank you. I will go ahead and refer you all to contact the city staff on that, and they can certainly look into this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remind everyone about the Hatch Chili Festival this Saturday from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's at Farmer's Market.
Okay. Well, I'll officially close that public forum and move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the council, with such approval applicable to all items appearing on the consent agenda. A council member may request that any item to be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. I want to make a note before we hear any motion. We had a request from the city engineer to be, to have item 15 pulled. It is actually not supposed to be for this meeting, but just wanted to make sure if we approve of anything, it would be with the exception and taken out, not consider, in not consideration of item 15. I'll, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Take a motion that we approve items five through 14.
Okay. We've got a, want to make sure you said that correct, five through 14. Perfect. And we've got a second from Ms. Norman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Does oppose say no? Motion carries. There's a 5-0. All right, we will now move on to the regular agenda. Agenda item number 16, discuss, conduct, a public hearing, and act on an ordinance regarding the petition of Paul Stoll of Plan Z Developments LLC for a comprehensive plan amendment from low-density residential, LDR, to retail R on part of LCAD 18277, 5.97 acres, legal description City of Paris Block 259, Lot PT of 14, North Collegiate Drive and Pine Mill Road. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this application is a comprehensive plan amendment. There are other applications that is related to this application that are zoning change applications for the same area and lot. So this application is by Mr. Paul Stoll of Plan Z Development. He's seeking to apply for an amendment for the comprehensive plan for this property being low-density to retail. It will relate to the future land use map of the property if approved. On August the 4th, 2005, this case was held by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and at its regular meeting, there was an extensive deliberation of this application where the commission voted to recommend approval of this item. So if you look at the details of the application, this lot has an acreage of 5.97, located around North Collegiate Drive and Pine Mill Road. The property is currently vacant. And furthermore, on this agenda, you have other zoning requests coming forward. So access and connection to utilities are available at this location. Commercial development in this location will provide conformity and will serve the immediate and long-term needs of this vicinity. Appropriate buffer will have to be needed to the southern portion of adjacent residential zoning district to minimize incompatible uses between residential and commercial use, preferably noise or any nuisance. So for the status of this issue before you today, it is because the application is for the, there has been an application for a zoning change. That is why this comprehensive plan amendment is before you today. The main goal is to make it from low-density to residential and for the future land use map. Within the area, the land to the north is currently zoned planned development with a request in future application, which will be very shortly, to change it to commercial, and is guarded by retail district. The land to the south is single-family dwelling, SF2, which is also guarded by low-density residential and developed as single-family residential. The land to the east is vacant and commercial district, which is also guarded by retail. And the land to the west is zoned single-family dwelling, which is guarded by low-density and currently developed as single-family dwelling. There are no significant budgetary implications due to this proposal. Currently, we have about 31 input forms received by the planning department that are opposed to this application from the surrounding property owners. At the 4th August meeting, planning and zoning, as I said earlier, discussed extensively and deliberated on this application, with a lot of neighborhood residents came, came in to talk about it. And in the end, they voted on this motion, six votes to one. Yes. So what is before you today, staff is recommending based on P&amp;Z's vote, six to one, we recommend that you approve this low-density residential to retail. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing and ask for anyone wishing to speak about this item to please come forward, state your name and address for the record. The public hearing is open.
Hi, I'm Mary Hart, and I live at 3095 Briarwood Drive. And the last time I was here, I got in trouble for talking too long. So I'll just stick to the points here. The first thing I wanted to, to comment is that there's 55 commercial properties in Paris that are sitting empty now, and we're looking at changing and making this a commercial property. It will increase traffic, both car and foot traffic through the neighborhood. I moved here from downtown Dallas to live in a quiet, peaceful, safe neighborhood. And having, I haven't for the last year, though, because all I've heard are trucks and heavy equipment moving dirt from the, from that, the time I wake up until bedtime. It's crazy. We have children in our neighborhood, and so it would increase the possibility of it being unsafe for kids with more traffic and more people in the neighborhood. The noise has already been increased. They cut down the trees, they cut down the brush, they cut down 100-year-old trees in our neighborhood. We didn't even know they were coming down. There's a light, there's possibility for light pollution, especially with, with parking lots and things that go with the commercial property. Drainage. I already have a problem at my house. When it rains, everything flows to my backyard from the entire neighborhood. That's another problem that we could have with increasing that into commercial property. Erosion. I live on the last street in the neighborhood, Briarwood. There's an alley that I was told at the last meeting was at least 20 feet wide. I measured it, and it's 10 feet and 11 inches. There, there was a fence that was put up five and a half feet from that for that property. I have power lines, I have telephone poles that are right behind my driveway. Already have a hard enough time backing out. That's another issue, but still, putting that fence up didn't really block the noise or change anything with that property. The erosion, with it being dug out, I'm concerned. We have gas. The back of my house, I have a gas meter. And I'll just stop there because I could go on. I don't want to get emotional about it. But thank you for your time, and thank you for considering.
Ms. Hart, could you repeat your address again, please?
Yes, 3095 Briarwood Drive.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Hart.
I'm Steve Ekstrom. I live at 725 Metalist Street, right in the middle of the Spring Lake Estates subdivision. 23 years ago, 23 years ago, Sims Norman appeared before this council, not this council, but a city council, and they wanted to move Norman Landers Insurance from downtown out to Collegiate Drive, and they needed to get something that was actually part of Spring Lake subdivision rezoned into commercial so that they could move the insurance company out there on, on Collegiate Drive. Sims got up and said something to the effect, "We're an insurance company. We're a very quiet company. We shuffle papers around the office. That's all we do. We're probably the quietest company in Paris." And everybody agreed with him. Everything got passed. The building got built. Within a year, they moved from downtown out to Collegiate Drive, and everybody was happy except the neighbors on every Thursday morning. Every Thursday morning at 5:17 in the morning, the neighbors have told me this, big truck comes in their parking lot, comes all the way across their parking lot, gets to their dumpster, picks it up, boom, 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 bang, knocks it down on the ground. When it's done with that, it backs up, baa, 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 baa. It backs on out of there, all the way out. Their parking lot shares a driveway with a house right next door. Now, I don't believe that, I've known Sims almost the whole total 31 years we've lived here. He's been our insurance agent for most of those 31 years. He's a good guy, fellow Aggie. And that's his wife, right? Okay, so Sims didn't try to deceive anybody. It's just something that nobody thought about. Nobody thought about the consequences of taking a residential site and turning it commercial, what it would do to the immediate neighbors. All right, 45 years ago, even further back, the first plat was, was approved by city council, by planning and zoning and city council for Spring Lake subdivision, the place where I live, where some of us live, where even the Normans at one time lived. I don't know if any of the rest of you ever lived there, but I know they did. It was 45 years ago, it was approved. And on the first plat, it clearly shows that Briarwood, if you're unfamiliar with it, there's four concrete streets in Spring Lake subdivision. There's Fairway, Metalist, where I live, and then working towards the loop, working towards Aiken. The next one is Bunker. Behind us is Briarwood. We go 14 houses deep on two of the streets. Ours are only 13 on Metalist because you can get into the, into the alley, coincidentally where I live, and Allen Boyd, somebody who probably know Allen, lived there also. And then Briarwood's at the back. There's 92 of us, 92 homes in Spring Lake subdivision, Spring Lake Estates subdivision. Okay, 45 years ago, city council, the plat was signed by then-Mayor Mike Malone. I'm sure a lot of you remember Mike Malone. He was city manager for quite a while, too. That's where I first encountered him when I moved here 31 years ago. When we bought the house on Metalist Street, the realtor told us about the margin. The margin, you say? Yes. The property that is behind Briarwood between us and the commercial part. We heard about it from them. When we went to closing at Stone Title Company, we were shown the plats. We were shown the deed restrictions that said all this would be single-family dwelling. And we were shown, and we were told, and our deed, it referenced all this in the deed. It referenced the, the deed restrictions, it referenced the plat. And it was a good selling point that Jan Saley, the, the realtor showed us. And so we bought the house. that Jan Saley, the realtor, showed us. And so we bought the house as the other ninety-two and everybody else who's ever lived there. Now, over these past thirty-one years, I've been involved in a lot of things like Kiwanis and Lions Club, Habitat for Humanity Church and other things. And I've come to know people who are familiar with the development of this. Probably, just back here, when Harris Walker and Harper came in with the plats and started developing what was a golf course at one time into where we now live. And the big question in my mind, I'm a civil engineer. I graduated from Texas A&amp;M. I'm a civil engineer, and so I've taken classes in urban and suburban development. And I was curious, why did they stop? Why did they stop at Briarwood? Why didn't they keep going? And a lot of the developers, I mean, a lot of the contractors and other people who were on city council and involved in said, "The city council was able to negotiate with Harrison Walker and Harper people to keep that buffer in there, to keep that zone in there, because when you have, when you have something like that, it makes for good neighbors, it makes for good neighborhoods, it makes for safe neighborhoods." Later on, when I became the area engineer at Tech Stop for Lamar and Red River Counties, I became real active with the city administration here because we were doing a lot of projects in Paris. And I became real involved with Mike Malone, who was the city manager at that time, and Earl Smith, who was our city engineer. And I asked these same questions, and Mike remembered all this, and he said, "Yes, that's what we," he was proud of that, that we did this. We kept that buffer in there. Now, you can ask yourself, if we leave that buffer in there, what can the owner do with that buffer? Well, he could put houses there. He could put houses there, and if he puts houses there, those people that buy those houses will know that out their front door is commercial. When we, the ninety-two of us bought our houses, we knew that there wasn't a commercial, there was a buffer there. We were told about it. It was in plats that were approved by the city council forty-five years ago. It was in the deed restrictions that were, that were referenced in those plats and which are also referenced in all of our deeds. It was an action that city council, the city of Paris, did forty-five years ago. They took care of us in Spring Lake Estates subdivision. And I would really appreciate, I think, all ninety-two families there in Spring Lake subdivision, Spring Lake Estates subdivision, would really appreciate it if this city council would honor what that city council did forty-five years ago and keep that zoned behind us as single-family and not let it become commercial. Because if it becomes commercial, who knows what's going to happen? It's not just dumpsters, it's not just dumpster trucks and backing up. It's not noise. Who knows what's going to happen? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Wanda Stevens. I live at nine fifteen Fairway Street. And so all of this that's going on with this topsoil removal and the dump trucks and all of that is literally in my backyard. And it's a piece of land that is landlocked so that whoever was selling it off could make money, and I understand that. That's what people do. But that, there is not going to be any streets added. That's one of the main issues. Right now, they made a road for the dump trucks that come up from back beside Ashley Furniture. That road, I've been assured, will be removed. That will not stay there. And there will be no access from the north to the new street of houses. So we want houses. We don't want commercial. If you put commercial in there, you have light pollution, you have noise pollution. It brings in people all hours of the day and night because here's this little piece of land, landlocked back there, that has some businesses, and you've got a lit, concrete parking lot that's going to add to the problem with the drainage. And so then, you've, they've taken down all the trees. They just literally, on that whole piece of property back behind Briarwood, they just bulldozed all the trees. And I was told from the last meeting that trees were going to be added back in. Well, there's no way you can put trees the size of what they bulldozed down. So anyway, it's like, we're just people. You know, we're not important. We're not going to make any money off of this, but we're going to lose money because if that becomes commercial and they use our streets to get to that because there's no other streets to get to that piece of land, then our property values are going to drop. So that does concern us. And we just ask that you take into consideration those of us that are just like you. These are our homes. We love our neighborhood. It's a nice, quiet neighborhood. But if you turn that into commercial, it's going to change the whole ballgame. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Counsel, I want to open up the floor to any questions or any concerns that we may have that we want to address, any clarity that we have.
I do.
Please.
Was there any kind of checking on what took place forty-five years ago? And then, secondly, I believe, Ms. Hart, concerning the noise and light pollution, were there studies done on all that? I know it was a six to one vote, but what kind of studies were there?
Yes, so I guess what they are talking about has to do much more with buffer. That there is a regulation on a buffer system that when it is put in place will curtail the concerns that they have. So we're going to rely heavily on buffer requirements because any residential and commercial land use, if there is any land use conflict, we use buffer systems to mitigate all those issues that they mentioned about.
Ms. Hart.
What are those buffer requirements?
We have different types. We have types for residential and commercial uses, and we have commercial and industrial use type. With this one, we will recommend, since they are complaining, we might go to the highest form of the buffer type. It can be much more of fence and also some trees and shrubs that help curtail visibility and also that may reduce noise purpose. And so those ones, we will require the developer to put in those requirements to meet those issues.
So that would be the developer cost?
Yes. The developer will have to agree on the required buffer. Technically, there is differences in land use type, residential versus commercial. So that is what requirement that comes in.
I'll say this. I think, I think our citizens do have a very fair point. I always stand up for business, and I completely agree, but I think that we also, there has to be a fair way to be able to buffer and do things correctly without disrupting everyday life. So what is a process that we're able to work with? Seeing that we have thirty-one oppositions, I mean, is there something that we can do in terms of roundtable? I know I've talked to Mr. Stoll on another matter regarding his property, and he's been very amicable and good to work with on a personal note. I've had to work with him on another private business, and it's one of those things that I really want to make sure that those individuals that live right behind this development really do get that protection and make sure that, hey, listen, if this does come to fruition, then I want to make sure that they don't get disrupted by that light, the noise, you know. I understand that, you know, hey, look, Collegiate is a really busy street, and that noise, I can't imagine folks that face Collegiate. I cannot imagine how they sleep at night, but I know that's a busy roadway. But I just want to make sure that that neighborhood is good, it's protected. And not just that, but also we've got to look at our property tax, right? We've got to make sure that our values stay, you know, considerably valuable and make it beneficial. So I want to make sure that we look into all that. I think it's a fair point. Let me go refer back to my notes here.
So I have one question.
Go ahead while I look at the notes.
Is there a planned road through Spring Lake?
Yeah, city engineer has looked at all and access.
To the commercial area?
There is not, you say?
He can explain it better.
Sure.
Hello, as Mrs. Hart, or Ms. Wanda stated, I talked to her on the phone at length. There will be no way for folks to get through Spring Lake to the commercial. It will be completely closed off. So the only way to access the proposed new commercial extension that comes to the south would be through the Paris Town Crossing access now, the private road that goes from the bank in front of Ashley Furniture to Home Depot. So all of the commercial and slash retail access will be from there. Nobody can get through the neighborhood and down.
So that's for today?
That's forever. That's going to be part of the plot requirements. So first of all, physically, with the elevation change, as Mr. Ekstrom pointed out, the elevation change there is great. So the roadway to get, or a proposed roadway to get down to a commercial site that combines with the current planned development property is not really feasible. And so we have the only part of the development agreement when it comes from a developer, which we have, a lot of the light pollution, traffic studies, things like that, they have to come from a developer during the development of that commercial zone. It doesn't normally come through grading or rezoning. It can, it's up to you guys what you need, what you would like, but the transportation will not be allowed by the city engineering department or the planning department to have a contiguous road that comes from the Spring Lake Metalist Fairway and every other road back there to get down to the proposed commercial extension. So it will be closed off with a buffer, as Mr. Amamensa mentioned, that it just, we're just not going to allow it.
Nice question.
Please.
Okay. The houses that are right behind where Ashley Furniture is and whatever's going to go in that, that's a drop-off there. How can there be any kind of buffer, if I'm understanding?
The buffer would be physical distance, fence, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Amamensa, but there's a lot of different ways they can buffer, including planting more shrubs, trees, et cetera. So it's not just, not just a fence, not just space, but we can be creative in that. And as it's being proposed for developing, which Mr. Stoll is also here, and he has said he's free to answer questions, too, if you have any questions directly for him. Because as the city engineer, I don't want to speak for a property owner. It's their business, it's not mine. But the developer that comes in and buys from him will have to abide by the buffering requirements that we set forth for the business they propose to put in.
And the developer or the business will do the buffer?
The, I guess both. It could be both. Sometimes, let's say, a XYZ ACME, ACME commercial company comes in, they may choose to develop the land themselves, in which case it would be them, or it could be ACME development company that comes through and builds a shell. And in that case, they would be responsible. And whatever business comes in has the buffer and all the appropriate utilities, drainage features, things like that. Those are already taken care of by the developer.
What's the elevation? What's that drop-off?
Previously, it was about, I'll have to, I don't, I'm not exactly sure. I think it's about ten feet.
Okay.
Once the excavation continues up to whatever engineered slope is agreed to there. So I've asked him, including today, say, "We need an engineered slope, stamp right professional engineer of what slope, wall, et cetera, will be along that back behind the new fence there?" I still have not seen that. And so I said, "You shall not get close to that until you have an engineered slope." And so his engineer is working on that.
So essentially, and I'm trying to gauge this in my mind's eye here. So if we have a ten-foot differential between the base of the home, let's just say that's up top to the bottom of where the commercial land would be, you're looking at about ten feet there. So it'd be, in essence, roughly about twenty feet up till the first floor ceiling or so, correct?
It could be, yes.
Somewhere around there, approximately. So when I think of buffer, I just think of, okay, hey, what's, what's something that I don't get light, light pollution or anything into the first floor of the home in case of someone sleeping or, you know. So that's stuff that I would want to be mindful of to make sure. And then, secondly, I think that that question about the roadway really helps to clear things up. So as I look at Ashley Furniture, you can go around if you need to, but there's really not much of a reason to go back there. Is there something that could be put, if there is something commercial that comes there, retail, what have you, a barrier of sorts or a gated access or something that could be put forth as a requirement to make sure that, hey, we have as minimum of noise and light pollution as possible?
That's a great idea, something we should explore when a developer comes through to propose, because we're not sure what is going to come in there. There's been a lot of guessing at what can, nobody knows yet, including the owner of the property at this time. I do want to bring up that that's an option, too, with what kind of buffer. Also, for light pollution, one thing, as city staff, we're going to concentrate on, especially in the Paris Development Code that our building officials working on at this time, is to limit light pollution. Instead of having a big overhead light that casts light everywhere, including up in the sky, have light pollution prevention, which is a directed LED that has shadows that end at the edge of the property or where they need to reduce crime and things so they can easily be focused and tipped so that one foot has full light coverage and then four feet away, there's nothing or next to nothing. It's not in the windows or anything like that. So what I envision, and it's really what, as the proposals come through, that all the light in the back of what, the fire lane that goes back there has a focus light that is tipped and has nothing that goes to the neighbor. Reflection on buildings, that can't be taken care of by a focused LED because that, you know, just the laws of physics there. But that's where a, maybe a higher fence, maybe some trees built into an engineered slope that can grow and have the root systems that actually help to hold the slope back and improve it. And those things can be explored. Yes, sir.
Mentioned fire lane. Will that be behind, will there be a fire lane behind Ashley Furniture?
That's a great question for the fire marshal, but every large-scale box drive scene has to have a fire lane to go behind because of coverage, because the building was so, so long. It is theoretically possible that they could not have one, but then that would close up the building because I think you have to have a hundred and fifty feet from the edge of the truck to where they have to hold the hose. So normally, they have a fire lane.
Clyde, is there, is there any?
Behind Ashley Furniture, sorry.
You mind coming up?
There already is a fire lane behind Ashley Furniture. I believe it's twenty-six foot wide. There's room for parking strips. So there's roughly about sixty feet between building and back of their property where they develop to. And then there's the slope above that.
Got you.
I have more questions now. I have more questions now than I had before. It's hard for me to vote one way or another on this. Is there any way we can table this? Do we, just like the study from forty-five years ago, I'd kind of like to see that and the light and the sound.
Did you say for forty-five years ago?
Wasn't that what somebody said?
Well, you know, the property has changed hands. I don't know how many times in that period of time. So the current property owner is not bound by any agreement with a past property owner. But I can't, that's all I can speak to. I can't speak to your questions about development issues.
Can I speak?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
I'm Paul. I'm the owner, the bad guy. And we're just citizens of the city, too. We're not a big green corporation trying to make a lot of money. That's not the point. And I'm very much sympathetic to the concerns of the residents there, very much. And I know that everyone, I shouldn't say everyone, but most people think worst-case scenario right away. And like I said at the last meeting, it is not our intention to diminish the value of those property diminish the value of those properties by $1 at all. And I am willing, and more than willing, to work together with you as a city to make it so that it's the best for everybody involved, including the residents that are there, and we want to respect their, their way of life and enjoy their property that they own. But back to the big picture, some of the concerns was traffic, and I'd like to just talk a little bit about some of these different concerns that were brought up. If, there's no traffic coming through there, there, there's nothing, there's no roads that will come through there. Everything has to, even just to make sense, the commercial needs to all come from the north, and for sure, nothing through the residential. That would never, it wouldn't work. One is the drop-off over on the other side, which is not my property. And behind Home Depot, there's a, almost a 17-foot wall, which is a hazard, and I wouldn't want that. My thought was is to put a very nice gentle slope from the property line and the fence, which is six-foot tall, a nice gentle slope, and we can sod it, grass it, plant trees, shrubs, to help with sound, light, all those things, make it look good. We don't want some bare, ugly wall to look at. So, we want to make it nice for everyone, but it makes, in my opinion, I'm the owner of it, I understand, but in my opinion, it makes the most sense because of the way, I don't know if you have a map in front of you, the way that the commercial is there in the front already, that was part of the original development, and this is connected to it, and we want to make the slope compatible with the front piece, so that it's one contiguous piece. It's not a landlocked piece, like was brought up, that's not the case. It'll be one contiguous piece of, of commercial property. And if we do that, it also allows us to have more room for a buffer. If we just, if we were to go in there and build another row of houses like was proposed at one time, now we've just tightened that up, and now we've just got a row of houses again against commercial, but it's also made it a lot tighter, and we've got a lot more of a, an elevation thing that we have to work with. By having a longer distance, and I've got a grade on that, I'm bringing it from what was prior a 20-foot wall of dirt to at the most a 10. It's at 6 on the west side, and it goes to 10 at the highest, and then it goes at that, that slope all the way back around the corner. So, the goal here is not to hurt anyone, but we also want to make it the best use for the, everyone, the city included, and also that the property would have the most value for, not only for me, but whoever buys it in the future to develop it, which that'll be up to you all to decide how that all happens at that point. I'm not a developer. My goal was just to get it leveled, to help with the erosion problems that were there before. The reason that I had the opportunity to buy it was because of, of the trouble that the previous owner had in selling it, because of the dirt situation there. They had several people come to look at it to purchase it, and when they saw that big mound of dirt and holes and water and erosion problems, they just left. They didn't want to do with it. So, I had the opportunity to take it on as a challenge, to get that mitigated, and we talked together with Todd, quite a bit, the engineer, to get something that would work well, and that is my goal, and it's not to hurt anybody at all. And I'm more than happy to work together with the engineer, the city, the residents, to make it to where everybody's happy, as much as possible. The piece over on the other side, now, it's a separate, a little bit of a separate issue, you might be getting to that a little later, but the piece on the other side, at this point, is zoned planned development, and we're asking to have that switched to single-family housing, so that it can be contiguous with the housing that is there now, which goes behind the insurance company that you were talking about here, so that that will be a little cul-de-sac that ties to the other houses, nothing through again, but it just ties to the back of it. So, that would, those few homes would increase the traffic a little bit, but if we did another whole street with 30 homes, it would increase the traffic significantly in the roads where they're living now. So, I feel like we would actually be decreasing traffic flow in the residential area by doing it this way. And so, that's, as far as drainage, there was some talk of drainage and erosion, all the water from my parcel runs to the south, as you know. Nothing flows, it runs to the north, I'm sorry, nothing flows into the houses. In fact, all the water from the housing and the roads dumps onto my property, and I have to deal with it. And it's okay, it's part of it, but it is, that is where the problem is coming with erosion, is from all of those homes and roofs and roads, it all dumps onto my property, and then I have to deal with it, with that ditch going down through there, which we're working with, we're trying to make it work, but it's been a bit of a challenge. So, I inherited that with the property, so. Again, with that, I'm willing to do whatever I need to, to make it work within reason, and so, any other questions you might have, I'm open to, but that's my side of it.
Please.
So, has that been looked at to maybe develop as residential? Is, is it appropriate for residential?
It could work, but the elevation changes would be not very suitable. You'd have, you'd have about a six-foot wall in people's backyards of either a wall or dirt, which would eat up almost all the backyard, so it would be very difficult. I'm not saying it couldn't be done, I'm not a builder, but it would, it would be very costly, costly to do it that way.
So, on the current slope now, you would make that a longer slope with sod and trees closer to the homeowner's fence, where it would have opportunity to...
More than happy to do that. In fact, we've talked about it for some time now. Once we get that slope graded to where Todd's happy and everyone, my, my thought is to come in there with six to eight inches of topsoil. If you'd like to have sod, I can agree to do that, put sod on it just for erosion control, or plant it to grass, and plant, of course, you can't plant 100-year-old trees, but we could plant trees, and they will grow in this country, they grow quite fast. I'm willing to do that as well.
And that would be before any kind of building takes place?
Yes.
Any more questions for Mr. Stoll? I did have a question for Mr. Micky at this time. I had one quick question, Mr. Micky. Sorry, I know we've closed the public forum for right now, so we'll wait till the next item to, for, for more public discussion, but, Mr. Micky, I do have a quick question related to this topic of drainage. Drainage and erosion were mentioned multiple times, and I just want to make sure, I mean, obviously, to the point where the homes are already developed, they're at a higher elevation, what is the best plan that Mr. Stoll, and then along with everyone else down the stream, have regarding this? Because I know that, look, our community is going through a massive change with new development, flooding, weather patterns changing quite frequently. We've, we've got to figure this out, and so, we want to get ahead of it, as opposed to being behind the eight ball at all times. So, what are some of the thoughts here regarding that, that the drainage of that from, from Spring Lake going down into that commercial portion, or technically what we're proposing today, and then going, going further north?
Well, as Mr. Stoll pointed out, all of the drainage from the current impervious at Spring Lake Edition comes down through that upper, the northwest corner of the existing addition, and goes into the channel, which comes along the existing homes fronting Collegiate Avenue at this time. And so, that, that has always been a very steep river system, and though seemingly small, it gets very deep and rushes very fast, because it's pretty steep. So, we've looked at it at length. During the development of this, in the grading permit, I required them to have an engineered stream design performed, so they hired a local engineer to do that. They built it per the plan, and it's still filled with mud, so that plan has to be modified. I have since met with, actually, I put on a continuing education class with, and invited all the professional engineers from Lamar County, including techs, dot engineers, and they all came. We found a revolutionary new, new ditch liner system called Fleximatt, and it is a type of system where concrete, for lack of a better term, a ball of concrete linked with, linked with geotextile, high survivability geotextile. They, they custom pour this in another part of Texas, bring it up on, on, I'd love to do a presentation for you, if you'd like. I could do a short one. So, they can bring it out, custom fit for the ditch that, as it's engineered, bring a trackhoe out, lay it out, and, and roll it out, and that lines the trapezoidal section of the ditch, and it cannot erode. And then the upstream, they tuck it in, kind of like you tuck a child into bed, you tuck them in nice and tight, tuck it in, tuck that in, so all the off-site water can come into that and not erode. And that is one of my long-term goals. We share a drainage easement with the, the Stoll's property, and so, the city does have an easement there, so we have, and we have a lot of say of what can go there, but what remains to be seen is how we would partner with that. So, that's just one of the ideas. With a, the high erodibility of our Texas soils, there, I don't know of anything else we can do other than concrete lining it, which just speeds things up. Thing about the Fleximatt with these, these balls of concrete linked together in a high survivability geomatrix, when it hits that, it can still, it acts like check dams as it's going down. It's kind of like a ribbed water flow, and so, that is, is something I'm really excited about, and it can grow grass too, so it's not ugly. So, that is my long-term plan for that river system in the city. It also could be used in other parts of the city as well.
Okay.
I also want to point out, they have submitted preliminary plats for this property, the property to the north of the Spring Lake Edition, is called Spring Lake Estates Phase, or actually, Paris Town Crossing Lot 6 Block, or Lot 6B Block 1. It has been approved by the P&amp;Z as a preliminary plat, but you all have not seen it as a final plat, and I have not seen it either as a final plat. But they've also submitted for Spring Lake Estates Phase 6, which is the western portion that Mr. Stoll mentioned. He wants to take that out of commercial and put it all in SF2 residential with an approximate six, 15 new homes of similar-sized lots that are already there now, and so that no commercial, which could go in now, would be allowed. It would just be SF2 lots then.
Any other questions, counsel?
But again, the main access to all of this new expansion would be the crossing off of Collegiate, that's in front of Ashley Furniture Mark.
Exactly. There will be no link from Spring Lakes to the commercial, or vice versa.
And then, the expansion of any of that residential, that would just be from the existing streets off of Pine Bluff? Would it go further back, or...
It would be from that, those 15 homes on the west side. They would be accessed from Fairway Street and Briarwood, and it would be an extension of 30th Street Northeast, kind of down as a cul-de-sac. And when HWH owned it, they had that same design roughly in that area, so it would be contiguous with that, but they never went through with any development there.
Any other last questions? If not, I'll, I'll go ahead and hear a motion.
I, well, I appreciate everybody's comments today, and I feel like, having 30 people write into a, a zoning change, and this would affect their homes, I'm very protective of neighborhoods when I sit on this council. My major concern is the egressing regress off of all the additional traffic on to Collegiate, because it's already treacherous in front of that, in the bank, and I would feel uncomfortable approving that without any other solution, as that being the major access into anything new. So, I, motion that we decline.
Okay, we've got a motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor of declining, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed of declining, say no.
No.
No. So, motion passes three to two.
The motion to deny.
To deny. Passes three to two.
Who opposed? Oppose...
Oh, no way.
Yeah, oppose the denial.
Who opposed the motion to deny?
That was Tracy, myself, and...
And you?
And Micky.
Wait, that's not right.
Who, who...
Sorry, did I say it backwards?
Who supported the motion? Who supported it?
I motion that we deny the request to change the order.
And I can second it.
Low-density.
And who voted in favor of that motion?
Just the two ladies.
Well, then it failed.
Then it failed.
Yeah.
Okay, the motion failed, okay.
So, is there another motion?
I guess that's a good point, yeah. I thought we were, could you not...
I'm sorry?
Can you not just use the same opposing point?
Well, you've got five people, apparently four voted. Right now, you had a motion to deny that failed, that is not an automatic approval.
Do we, do we need to have a supermajority on this? If there's one, okay.
It was approved by P&amp;Z.
By P&amp;Z. Good, then I'll go ahead and open the floor to another motion then.
Motion to do...
Since that failed, it's, it's a motion to, whatever you would like to make the motion as.
Good. Can I make a motion that we do table this, to where we can maybe have a full council and get a little bit more clarity on, we know how it's going to affect the homeowners, but maybe a little more clarity as council, because this is a, that's a, a big thing for those homeowners there, a big thing for the developer, who I'm sure is wanting to proceed, but could we table this and maybe even have a, a workshop as a council to get presented a little more information than, than what I have?
If we can do that, I'll make it in a second.
So, we've got a motion in a second to table the discussion and to have a discussion during a workshop to better iron out.
I need to look to do just a, a little bit of research to make sure we can workshop it under the zoning statute. I think we probably can, but certainly, you can table it.
Before we take that to a full vote for discussion, I just want to explain something real quick here. I know there's a bunch of jargon up here that is very unclear, so I just want to make sure everyone understands. This is a very important topic. Clearly, we have 31 homes that are opposed to this, and then we have a developer that is, that really wants to make this thing happen. We want to make sure that we have the best decisions at, at hand, and make sure that we make the right, the right decision, and make the right, basically, ruling on this to make sure that we hold everyone accountable, we understand what we're voting on, the developer understands their position, the households, you know, understand theirs. We want this to be an open forum, to be able to understand and make sure that we mitigate any issues. Before we make this decision, we as a community need to realize that going forward, period. Any decisions we make, we've got to come together and unite as a community. So, I appreciate the council for having, yet another tough decision to have to make, but that's what happens when you're trying to grow a community. So, I appreciate that. And without further discussion, I want to go ahead and take that to a, to a vote for tabling the items. So, we've got a motion for Mr. Atterbury, a second for Mr. Ellis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five zero to table.
Can I ask one more question?
I have to move on to the next item, I'm sorry, but you can ask it during that one.
Okay, I was just, yeah, okay.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number 17. Discuss, conduct, a public hearing and act on an ordinance regarding the petition of Paul Stoll of Plan Z Developments LLC for a zoning change from a one-family dwelling number two SF2 to commercial C on part of Elcat 18277, 5.97 acres. Legal description, City of Paris, Block 259, Lot, Lot PT of 14, North Collegiate Drive and Pine Mill Road. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes.
Excuse me. Mayor, do you want to table 17 and 18, since they're all part of the same property?
Yes, could we, could we couple that together to, to table? Or do we have to do that separately?
I would do... I would do a motion to table on each one.
Okay.
And if you're going to table it, you've had a pretty good hearing here this evening. I don't know that you need to have another presentation by staff since it's all the same.
I agree, and that way it saves time for, for everyone here.
I make a motion that we table item number 18.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Okay, we've got a motion to table item number 17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Attaberry. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five zero.
Can I ask my question? I wanted to ask them something.
So after we tape, after we look at tabling this next item, I want to have this discussion. Absolutely, because that's a good question and I want to make sure that we get whatever answers we need as counsel. Agenda item number 18. Discuss, conduct a public hearing and act on an ordinance regarding the petition of Paul Stole of Plan Z Development LLC for a zoning change from Plan Development PD to Commercial C on LCAD 121806, 8.12 acres. Legal description, Paris Town Crossing Addition, Block 1, Lot 6B, North Collegiate Drive and Pine Mill Road. Steph, if you'll just come up real quick and I do want to be able to just at least have a discussion on this item.
On this item?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So you want me to present or you're going to table?
You could just do a brief one sentence.
Okay. So on Monday, August 4th, 2025, the Planning and Zoning Commission held its regular meeting on this case. And there was an extensive and long deliberation on this zoning change petition. And the commission voted to recommend approval of this case. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I would like to go ahead and have a discussion from council and open up the floor, please. Mr. Ellis, go ahead.
Question I asked.
Yes, sir.
I just had a simple question. The homeowners and the developer, have y'all sat down together and discussed all of this? Because he seems like he's got the right heart in trying to make y'all happy. And as a homeowner, I understand. You know, I don't want to lose value on my property and so forth and so on. Mr. Stole seems to have a heart for, excuse me, a heart for you homeowners. And if there was a way that y'all could sit down and ask him the hard questions and you give the hard answers and maybe, maybe a conclusion could take place between you guys. I believe in being a peacemaker.
I would like to ask staff that we, I know we've got a lot of discussion in the future for this until we make the final determination, but to potentially host a gathering.
Yeah, we can do that.
What I was talking about between them.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. Because I mean, at the end of the day, this needs to be a good discussion between staff, the homeowners and the developer to come up with a good amicable understanding. But also, I do have one quick question regarding collegiate. You know, obviously that we, that is a big concern is traffic. It's already pretty intense right there. My question is, is collegiate would be, is, I know that's cities maintenance. That has a lot to play with the loop construction also that'll be taking place. Is there something that we can also bring text dot to the table on this to make sure? Because that's right there. I mean, that's very close to, to loop frontage to make sure that we are safe for whatever development does come. I mean, this is, this is a very important area of ingress, egress that needs to be defined safely. And I mean, sure, the developer needs to know that process also. So that way they're, they're able to figure it out. So I request that we also bring text dot to the table to kind of have a good understanding of this concept. Go ahead.
There is a, the majority of that parcel is already commercial or planned development. It was part of the original. And that whole traffic scenario is in play today. It's, we're not asking to change that at all. That, that's already there. If I didn't do anything, we didn't rezone anything, that whole front piece would be developed commercial. It is commercial. It will be developed commercial. That's all going to happen, very likely, whatever you all decide to do with that little addition that we're doing in the back. That's combining these two together to make it more suitable for the development and to mitigate the slope and that kind of thing. That's why my proposal is to combine these two to make it more suitable in the big picture for everybody. But it's going to be commercial, it is commercial in the front already. I'm not asking, I mean, that's already there. So that, we're not asking to change that. That's there. And it's going to be developed commercial, very likely by somebody, if it's not me. So that, that's the only point I'd like to make is already the traffic and I understand collegiate. It's there already and it, something probably needs to be done with the city. I think just me as an old country boy, one of those houses needs to be sold or bought by the city or somebody. Open that up, put a light there, and that takes care of controlling that coming out onto Collegiate. But that's a Home Depot, that's really Home Depot traffic. 99% of it's Home Depot traffic. And that's not related to us at this point. But it would only get worse, I understand, with more development. But what else are we going to do? Make a park? We can make a park if you want to. The city's going to have to do it. Because I can't afford to do it for free.
Thank you, sir.
Ma'am, I have one request that we can't.
Can we address this stuff?
So. I'm sorry, ma'am, if you'll give me just a moment. I know we are looking at tabling this thing. I understand you guys are already here. So I'm going to go ahead and take, as long as legal's good with it, I'm going to give these people an opportunity to be able to state their opinion on this.
Are you going to open the public hearing?
I will open the public hearing.
But you didn't open a public hearing on 17.
I know we didn't, but this is another item.
It is.
It is. I want, I want them to be able to have that opportunity.
You're the chair.
If you have another one, you'll, you know what I mean? Like you'll have a public hearing then if you're not making a decision now.
True, but you know, just so that way we get more clarity and understanding of what, what, have more discussion. We want to give you the voice. Let me give you, give me just one, one, one second here. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and ask for anyone wishing to speak about the item to please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please, go ahead.
My name is Steve Ekstrom. I live at 725 Methodist in Spring Lake Estates subdivision. I've already talked about our opposition to this, but there's something I think that everybody needs to know here. Four years ago, four years ago, Harris Walker, I'm sorry, Walker Harrison Harper owned this property. Don Wilson brought a developer in here to planning and zoning and they were going to rezone this plus to build apartments back there. Wanted to build apartments, never made it to city council because we developed a petition and circulated it. And of the 92 households, 90 of the households signed the petition. The other two, those people were in rehabilitation and we didn't go over there and bother them to get to sign it. Additionally, everybody on the east side of Collegiate that backs up to this, they signed the petition. And two houses deep of all the streets, everybody but one. And that one person had dealings with Harrison Walker, Walker Harrison Harper. And he didn't want his name associated with it, and I understand that. So out of all these people, oh, plus over on 31st Street, there's 10 houses over there. So that petition is public knowledge because we developed, we delivered it to the city of Paris. It should be in the engineer's office because we, Carla Easton was the city engineer at that time. Grayson Path was the city manager. And Stephen Clifford, Dr. Clifford was the, was you, was the mayor when all this happened. And we were all in masks back then. And the petition knocked all this stuff out of the water. Developers said, whoa, I had no idea there was so much, this missed much opposition to it. But that is a public knowledge then. We didn't do it in this forum, but still that petition should exist in his office. We can do another petition and if, I mean, if we want to really stir this thing up. But it was public knowledge and then this property was bought, was sold by the, to the trust, the Harrison Walker Harris Harper Trust, less, a little over a year ago, June of last year. This knowledge should have been out there. The opposition in our community from Collegiate in Spring Lakes, over on 31st Street, the opposition to anything going on back there, nothing was ever talked about. And the city, the city allowed the developer to get on this property. Yeah, it's his property, but still there's rules. He allowed to get on that property and strip mine the sand off of that. He took a residential property and turned a, put a commercial operation out there, which is illegal. We just took the, the city just said, these rules don't matter.
Mr. Ekstrom, I will say this. With the spirit of.
It's a policy, okay.
No, no, I'm just saying with the spirit of the debate, I understand that. 45 years ago, four years ago, what, whatever timeframe we want to look at it, I please ask you that we have a good discussion. This gentleman is here and he wants to be.
I just wanted that known on the table, that there's that opposition out there. There's that petition, it's in his office. I doubt Carla got rid of it. It may have gone to city, it may have gone to Grayson Path because that's who it was destined for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for saying that.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens?
Wanda Stevens, 915 Fairway. My request was that each of you that is involved in this decision making, that y'all come down Fairway Alley and look at what we're talking about because you'll know where the houses end on Fairway. It's to the west and it's just this mountain of dirt that they're selling off. And I don't have a problem with that. I know the commercial is already down the hill. I don't have a problem with that. I have a problem with that one little piece that bumps into Spring Lake Retirement Center, that that one little piece not go commercial because that is our neighborhood. So if y'all would just drive down that alley and check it out and lay eyes on what's going on and then you'd have a better idea of making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If there's no one else that would like to speak on the public forum, I'm going to close the public hearing. All right, counsel. It's been a fun one, go ahead.
Make a motion that we table number 18.
Thank you. We've got a motion from Ms. Norman. Do I hear a second? Got a second from Mr. Ellis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to agenda item number 19. Received presentation from Thomas McMonigal, Chief McMonigal, about the fire department.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. We're here tonight to give a report on the status of the fire department and to address concerns that have been raised in our department, in the public and on social media. We've lost 10 firefighters since Christmas. We're having trouble recruiting and retaining firefighters. Our current firefighters are frustrated. Our citizens are frustrated. Everybody's frustrated and I understand that as a chief. The city manager and I are actively working, trying to address these issues in order to correct the problems that we have. And we wanted to update the council and the public on what we're doing to alleviate some of this or to try to alleviate it. All right. There were serious complaints from the men in our department that no one was talking to them. We conducted a survey of the personnel and one of the main things that came back was that I had failed in communicating our department's status, our goals and our direction to our firefighters. We had a total bottleneck in the communication chain between me and the firefighters. They felt that there was no transparency in our administration and they were seeing problems they felt weren't being addressed because they weren't being informed of what was actually taking place in the front office. They felt ignored. And I understand that. We've done a lot to try to correct that. We're working on it all the time and we've corrected most of those communication issues we had. We're having monthly meetings with each shift and we're discussing everything that takes place in our department. They hear the things we discuss in our deputy chief's staff meetings. They're kept up to date now on all of the budget issues. And they know, they know the things now that are being discussed between city management, council and myself regarding the current status and the future of our department. They're hearing all of this directly from me and they're given the opportunities to ask questions when they choose. We've also put some message boards up in our stations to help with this information flow, to try to keep people updated. We're still working on getting all the functionality on those work, those message boards up there, but it's, the efforts are underway. And we received a lot of positive feedback regarding the communication and we think that we're doing better in that regard. Another issue that was raised in the survey was also the desire to change work schedules from a 2448 schedule to a 4896 schedule. The previous city manager was not in favor of that change, but Ms. Beverly has agreed to sit down and listen to the firefighters regarding this issue and hear the pros and cons of changing to such a schedule. The firefighters have worked hard putting together a presentation for that discussion and I believe that discussion is going to be held later this week. There were also major concerns regarding the status of our fire apparatus yield. We've talked about that in previous meetings. Our fleet's getting older with the newest piece of apparatus being a 2017 model. They're beginning to require more and more maintenance and they've been spending a lot of time in the shop for repairs. We've had an apparatus replacement scheduled in place since 2014. But due to changes with city managers, COVID-19 and budgetary constraints, we fell off that schedule and we haven't been able to get back onto it till now. Thanks to you and the city manager, we were able to secure the tax note. We've gotten back onto the schedule. We're still behind, but at least we're moving forward and we're not stagnating or falling further behind. Another thing that we've done to try to address some of the maintenance issues is to implement a squad response to medical calls whenever possible in order to save this mileage and the maintenance on these vehicles, on this heavier apparatus. What this means is we're spotting a brush truck with two men instead of a fire engine or a quint with four men on it to most medical calls and lift assist. This concept has had mixed response from our personnel. Some don't like it, some do like it. But the main thing that it's done is it's significantly reduced our maintenance cost along with wear and tear on our apparatus. In last fiscal year's budget, we spent an average of $10,100 per month on vehicle maintenance. From October through March of this year, we were spending $8,800 per month. We implemented a squad response in April. And since that time, we've only averaged $4,700 a month in vehicle maintenance. That's a significant savings over where we were this time a year ago and it's saving quite a bit of wear and tear on our apparatus. Hopefully, we're able to extend the useful life of this to make it last where we need it to go. These brush trucks, since April, ran just over 500 calls from, from the beginning of April through the end of July. And that, those calls would have previously been run using a fire engine. We saved over 130 hours of operating time on those same engines. And this is just a way for us to be more efficient while providing the same level of service to our citizens, which is our goal. Along those same lines, we're also working with our 911 dispatch center, Chief Salter and Ms. Beverly to acquire some type of priority dispatch software for our medical emergencies. During, due to limitations in our current system, we're currently unable to filter the calls in a way we would like. So there's quite a few times where we're sending more resources than necessary just to make sure we have enough to take care of our patients. This software, if we're able to get it, would allow our dispatchers to ask questions, which will in turn help determine the appropriate resources to send. Using this would also allow us to be more efficient serving the public without adding unnecessary miles and hours to this fire apparatus that's already aging. Our end goal is to always provide the best service possible to our citizens while remaining fiscally responsible with the manpower, equipment and funding available. Another concern that's been raised, and this was a big one, is the compensation for our employees. And I know this is a, compensation is a concern for all of you and for all of our departments, but the only ones I can speak intelligently to is the fire and EMS departments. This is an ongoing problem that we seem to be perpetually falling behind other cities. In fiscal year 2021, a beginning firefighter in Paris made $39,994. A beginning paramedic at that time made just slightly more at $40,532. The following year, a comparable pay study was conducted. We were way behind at that point. We were able to implement those results. Our firefighters' pay increased at that time to $48,300 for a beginning firefighter. That was roughly a 20% increase just to put us in the middle of the cities that were surveyed. We were that far behind. Just to get to the middle was a 20% increase. At that same time, a paramedic's pay increased roughly to $48,000 as well. Then former city manager Path also changed. Then former city manager Path also changed the retirement system for our firefighters in two thousand twenty-two, which effectively put nine percent of their pay back into their pockets instead of the former retirement plan, but it didn't increase their yearly salary, so we were still behind. Since that time, even though the COLAs have been implemented in the years since, we've fallen behind yet again. And I know that's not a surprise, but I've conducted an informal survey of twenty-plus cities in our area, we're dead last, even when you compare us to cities like Bonham, and I hate to say this, but Cooper. Cooper recently advertised hire, to hire three firefighters, and they started them out at more than Paris did. So thi- this has become a big issue for both fire and EMS agencies, as far as hiring and retaining our employees. And I know Ms. Beverly is actively working on a pay study and a plan to make us competitive again, but this is going to take time to just to put the plan together, then to fund it and to implement this. So i- it's not something that's being ignored by city management, but it is something that's going to take time, because we are dead last again compared to every city around us. Another concern that was brought forward was regarding the, the conditions of our stations. We've had several issues that just were continually pushed back due to budget constraints. We're actively working on those issues as we speak, just going through the budget process. The first, the kitchen at Fire Station One needed to be remodeled, some of the tile was torn up out of the floor due to leaks in the wall, and we were able to get part of that money in this year's budget, but we're going to have to cross the, into next year's budget to finish that. We've got that money in the budget to do, and we will be completing that project this year. We've replaced and are continuing to replace furniture along the way, we have new weight equipment in the upcoming budget, and we're doing our absolute best to address maintenance issues as they occur, rather than putting them off until later. We've recently had some issues with the AC in the sleeping areas at Fire Station One. That air conditioner was down a good three weeks. The conditions in there weren't horrible, but they were not good either. They had to leave the doors open so that the AC from the other parts of the building would filter in there, they were using industrial fans to move air to keep it comfortable enough in there to sleep. And it, that noise just from those fans made it tough to hear the calls as they came across. The repair company was called immediately, but we had a lot of issues getting parts. I mean, I know everybody's seen the supply chain issues we've had since COVID. We were having issues getting compressor parts, they got one in, it broke down, then they end up having to get another one. It took over three weeks just to get the AC fixed in there, and this is where our firefighters live. So that was a big deal. Hopefully, we've got that resolved now, the AC is working again, but it's, this is just something that, we, we try to address these issues as fast as we can, but we're dealing with older buildings that need a lot of maintenance. Our oldest building was built in nineteen sixty-five, we've got a fire station that's sixty years old. The newest one is Fire Station Four, which was built in two thousand one. Y'all know, as these buildings start getting twenty, twenty-five years, at, at a minimum, you're starting to replace AC units, you're starting to do a lot of maintenance that costs a lot of money. We're working on those, and we're trying our best to keep that up. We've had to replace heaters in our bays, which we have to keep the bays at a, a certain temperature so that none of the water freezes in the equipment, and we're spending that money, but it does get expensive, and it takes time just to get the parts that we need. But like I said, we try to stay on top of that as best as we can. Another issue that was brought up was our staffing levels. Firefighters have concerns with our staffing levels in relation to the national standards such as NFPA seventeen-ten. These are concerns that I first brought to council back in August of two thousand twenty-one during budget hearings. That's when NFPA seventeen-ten changed to the newer standards, and we were meeting standards before, but since two thousand twenty, we are not. NFPA seventeen-ten is a National Fire Protection Association standard, it establishes the benchmarks for fire department response times and staffing in all career fire departments. The standard currently says we should have four personnel on each engine, and we should be able to arrive at the scene of a structure fire within four minutes at least ninety percent of the time. And along with that, we should have a minimum of sixteen personnel on scene at a residential structure fire. We're not able to meet any of those goals right now. We're not meeting any of them. Station One and Station Four have four people each assigned to it, Station Three only has three. Due to staffing levels that we have of sixteen people per shift, and the need for our people to use their vacation and their accrued leave time, we're able to run at a minimum of fourteen right now, but a lot of times that has to be accommodated through overtime. That's the only way we can accomplish those goals, just to keep fourteen people there is through overtime, because our people work hard, they need to take their vacation time just like everyone else does. So we had, it would take a minimum of nine additional firefighters just to meet the manpower recommendations that's currently out there, which is going to have a significant budgetary impact should we ever go that route. Not only are we short on the recommended staffing levels, we're also short in struggling to meet the response time standards. We should, like I said earlier, we should be able to get to a residential structure fire anywhere in town in four minutes or less at least ninety percent of the time. As you can see on the graphic, we're meeting it fifty-six percent of the time. A large step towards changing that would entail, you'd end up having to buy another fire engine and hire the people that I mentioned earlier, and then put that engine back into that station on Pine Mill Road, would be the only way to alleviate those gaps, because we have large gaps in our coverage area, especially in the northeast side of town. A lot of that is traffic driven, but a lot of it's also growth driven. So the only way we could ever meet those standards and get, or even get close to them would be to open up that other station, which like I said, would require an engine, which is a million dollars, and then the nine more people at a minimum. Really need more than that, but the nine people would get that station open and get us up and running in that area. Like I said, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be perfect, but it would have a large impact on the response times, and it would alleviate the manpower concerns meeting those standards. Ms. Beverly has recently met with all three shifts in the fire department and has done her very best to address the concerns, letting the firefighters know that both she and the council are aware and are actively trying to make things better for the department and our community. But as a follow-up to this, I also need to let you know, along with these NFPA seventeen-ten standards, I have been notified that we will be undergoing an ISO study sometime this fall. It's been just over ten years since we had the last study done, that was in two thousand fourteen, and they're going to be rating everyone in this area who has, has not been rated in the last ten years. The field rep has let me know they'll be here somewhere in the last quarter, but I have not been notified yet of what time or, or what month that will be. Due to our inability to be, to meet these standards, our rating is just likely to decrease. Now, how much is going to decrease and what kind of an impact that's going to have on everyone, I, I, that's, that's unknown at this time, that's going to be dependent on the rating that we receive. And the fire department's about fifty percent of that, forty percent of that's water, and then ten percent of that is dispatch, but the fire department holds the biggest piece of that puzzle right there. So we'll just, we'll have to see, you know, what comes out of that survey when it comes. But that's all I've got for you this evening. If there's any questions I could answer, I'll be glad to take any questions from you.
Counsel, any, any questions at the moment?
So regarding pay-
Yes, ma'am.
-and the surrounding areas, what is the average pay, Greenville, Sherman?
Somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty-seven thousand. That's what Greenville is giving a test here, I believe, the end of this month. Sherman's hiring, Dennison's hiring, Dennison's going to hire twenty-one, they've got a large growth over there. They're all paying in the sixty-seven thousand range.
And we're at forty-eight?
Forty-eight, forty-nine, yes, ma'am. Just under fifty. And even Bonham starts out at over fifty. Cooper, the three that they advertised to hire was going to be a little over fifty thousand, I think just under fifty-one, but they were still ahead of us.
Can you provide that for us with the list of surrounding areas?
Yes, ma'am. I'll be glad to do that.
Have it written?
I've visited with the mayor and I've, yes, ma'am.
Well, we're doing a pay study right now, and so those numbers will come back. I mean, if you want them earlier, you can, but it would all come in the pay study.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Is the, was the Project Listen experience helpful in that communication of?
Yes, ma'am. I did not realize that bottleneck was there, nor did I realize just how serious it was. I mean, I've, I've owned it, I'll admit it to anyone, I was a total abject failure at communication. Our people did not know the communications and the conversations I was having with city management. These are all things that I had conversations with, with our previous city manager on a monthly basis. We need more people, we need more money, we need the equipment. Every month, we need to get back on this apparatus replacement plan. Our people didn't know I was having that conversation. It was discussed in staff meetings, but it wasn't making it out to the firefighters that needed to hear this. They did not know where we were going, they did not know that there was a plan at all. You know, the, the plan the entire time is to eventually get enough manpower to open up that station too again, and to be able to cover these areas. As I said, I've discussed that with the previous city manager, I started discussing it with Ms. Beverly as soon as she came here. The problem was they did not know it was happening. So, yes, I have taken very proactive measures to do that. They hear this from me now. Every staff meeting, I disseminate the notes, I disseminate copies of our budget, where we're at as far as what we spent through the year, what's left in the budget, they get all of the information, it's one hundred percent transparent. So I, I think it's very productive in that aspect, because it is something I needed to know, and, like I said, I was just a total failure in that aspect, and I've done everything I can to correct that at this point. Yes, ma'am.
With this current staff that you have now-
Yes, ma'am.
Will you be able, would you be able to go to forty-eight seventy-two shift? Are those the numbers?
Forty-eight ninety-six.
Forty-eight ninety-six.
Yes, ma'am. That, that would not change, the, the, the opportunity to do that is not dependent on the staffing levels, we could do that, yes, ma'am.
Is that what the majority wants?
I believe so, yes, ma'am. Like, as I said, they're going to meet with Ms. Beverly later at, this week, and they'll be making a presentation to her, and they'll discuss that. Ultimately, that's not the fire chief's decision, that's city management's decision, so that, that's something that they will be visiting with her about, and they'll, they'll make that determination after that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thanks for your honesty.
Yes, sir. I'll say this. About a year ago, I was approached about some of these issues, and Project Listen was, was one of those things that came about from that. It took some real courage to stand up and have some of these discussions with council, with our community. And a lot of times, we don't know the struggles that you guys go through as first responders, and it matters. It really does matter. And this is a real deal. What you just presented, these are some real issues we've got on our hands as a community, and we have got to support you all. We've got to. So I know we're going to be having some hard conversations as a community, whether it's this year, next year, year after that, what have you, put whatever timeframe you want on it, but we're going to have some tough conversations around this dais and around the city hall. But I don't want that to, to, I don't want that to bring negativity upon us, I think we need to have clear minds and sit down as a community and think a way through this. Just before this meeting, there was a email that was sent out through TML. Our state legislature wants SB ten to lower voter approval rate to one percent for all cities. The state is squeezing us dry, and not, not allowing us as cities to be able to stand up and run our communities. And it's not fair, because these individuals right here are homegrown, majority of them, and they're here because they love our community, they love what they, what they serve, they love the people here. You love this community, we want to be able to support you. So as a community, as citizens of this town, if we love our town, we have got to do whatever we can to stand up and fight. We have to. And so let's support our first responders, let's support Public Works, let's support all of our city staff. Oftentimes, I see this, this kind of attitude towards our city staff, and it's like, come on, man, they're citizens too, we've got to help each other. So I'm going to get off my soapbox on that, and I will say one thing, not this past weekend, the weekend before, you, your gentlemen, we, we had, we had e- emergency services, so we had paramedics come out, we had fire, and we had police come out on a situation I had at one of my businesses, and they handled, watching, watching these men and women handle the situation and calming down the situation, calming down the, the parent that was going through such a hard time, and there were kids involved, giving them little bears. I mean, what you all do is such a thankless job, and it was a firefighter, he's in this room today, that brought out these little bears to give out to these, to these little babies. And so that way, it kind of gives them a little bit of comfort and respect for that, for that, for our first responders. That right there moved me, that touched me to a whole nother extent. And so I want to say, you guys are amazing, we appreciate you. I know words can only go so far, but these are real issues that we understand as a council, and I can tell you right now that we want to do whatever we can to make this happen, not just for our first responders, but for our entire city staff. And I hope that, I hope that goes a long way there, and I hope that you guys understand that. So I know I just opened a can of worms up there of, of inspiration, but I just hope that we leave here knowing that we as a community need to come together and, and, and work as a community. We got to look ourselves in the mirror and help each other out, so. I appreciate everyone, and I appreciate you, chief, appreciate you, first responders, this council appreciates you, and we want to continue to fight hard for you. Point taken, we're, we're down, but we need to continue to work.
I just want to say thank you, Mahir, because you echo what I feel that we all support and for all of y'all.
And I appreciate that. As you mentioned, most of our people are homegrown. People typically don't move here from the Metroplex to go to work for the city of Paris. They are homegrown, they do care about this community, and they care about the people here. But just remember, the first people they care about, as they should, are their wives and kids. So when they're looking at these other cities that are paying twenty thousand more, they've got to make that, that, their, their wife and kids have to be their first priority as well, so that, that is a huge consideration for them. You know, a lot of us have stayed through a lot of years where it was bare bones, you know, and we did that because we're homegrown. This is our community. These guys feel the same way I do about these, and I've mentioned this, the mayor's heard this soapbox from me before, these are the people we grew up with, we went to school with, we go to church with, we see every day. These are the people we take care of, and these are the people we care about. So I, I appreciate all your kind words, and just know that that's the way they act every day, whether anybody's watching or not, they care.
Well, Hayden, on top of that, just one last thing for, for any staff member that's out there, I mean, look, we're going through some hard times, but we have to be there as, as a united force, so this council is here to support our city staff. We genuinely want our staff and our management, everyone to know that we're here. So if there's ever an issue, hey, I'm down, peer-to-peer support is a big thing too, I talked to some of the, the EMS department about that too, and I mean, that is a big deal. We've got a lot of issues going on in the world, and, you know, together, we've have, we have to come together, but, you know, there's a lot of departments that are, that are hurting. And so that goes from, you know, our first responders to even the, the men and women at Public Works, to whichever other department you want to name out there, I mean, it's tough. So we're all here for each other, but we want to really spread that word, so. Thank you.
Thank you for everything you said, Mayor. The mitigation software that you were describing-
Yes, ma'am.
Have, has it been priced yet? Is that, is that for ongoing?
We're looking at a couple-
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, we're looking at a couple of different options, the police department already had some in their budget, we're looking at that to make sure that it'll do what we're trying to do with that. If not, then we may pivot and look, but we're going to try to make what they already had budgeted work. It's just a matter of, right now, we filter these medical calls through a bucket with really large holes. If a fall call comes in, we, we send fire and EMS for that, where if you were able to dig a little deeper and the right questions were asked, that, okay, when did they fall? okay, when did they fall? How far did they fall? Things like that. And that's just one little scope of that. Our dispatchers do a fantastic job, not criticizing them. This is about giving them better tools to help us do this, okay? But it would help filter some of those calls out because sometimes, you know, if they fell three days ago and they're sore or they're hurting, it's not the same as someone falling off of a roof, you know? So that's the type of thing we're trying to filter our way through on all the medical calls. And by doing that, we can get a lot more efficient in the way we deliver these services because, as I said, we want to make sure we send everything we need without sending everything we have unless it's what's needed. You know, we want to be efficient, but still give the public the service they deserve.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 20, discuss and act on a resolution calling a public hearing on the proposed budget for our fiscal year 25-26. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Mayor, City Council. A public hearing on the proposed budget is required by Section 48 of the city charter and Section 102.006 of the local government code. You've been provided in your packet a resolution that would call for a public hearing on September the 8th and the staff recommends that you pass that resolution.
Counsel, is there any discussion? If not, I'll hear a motion.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Mr. Ellis and a second from Ms. Normant. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries 5-0. Agenda item number 21, discuss and act on a resolution calling a public hearing on the proposed tax rate for the fiscal year 25-26. Mr. Anderson.
Mayor, City Council. A public hearing on the proposed city tax rates required under Chapter 26 of the Texas Tax Code. A resolution has been provided in your packet. It would call for that public hearing to be made on September the 8th and the staff recommends that you pass that resolution.
Counsel, is there any discussion on this item? If not, I will hear a motion.
I make a motion to approve item 21.
Second.
Motion from Ms. Putnam.
No, 21.
21. Motion from Ms. Putnam and second from Mr. Attaberry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries 5-0. Agenda item number 22, consider and approve future events for the city council and/or city staff pursuant to Resolution Number 2004-081. Does anyone have anything? All right. And we will move on to agenda item number 23, adjournment. I will hear a motion in a second.
On behalf of Gary, I might motion adjourn.
Second.
In a second. All right, we are adjourned.